Workshop to order. First discussion item, employee recognition. Chief Griffin?
Mayor, Council, appreciate the opportunity this morning. I wanted to honor Captain Lane Britt this morning with having eighteen total years with the town, and this is his fifteenth year paid for, as a paid fireman for us. So, he's got a lot of longevity in our department. Actually, he's one of our longest tenured paid members that we have. So, he was back in the early part of the coming on. We had twelve-hour shift firemen, not twenty-four, and so he's watched the department grow and saw several chiefs come through. So, he's got a lot of history with the town, and his family's had property on the island for a long time. So, it's an honor for us to be able to give him this fifteen-year recognition with employment, and hope we can get fifteen more out of him, get his full thirty. So, Captain Britt, we appreciate it.
Awesome. Thank you, sir.
And his wife and kids here with him.
All right. Oh, awesome.
That's the backbone of the town.
That's the way to do it.
Exactly.
Congratulations.
Thanks for doing what you do.
Thanks for your service.
Thank you. We have one more, which I think I'll give out this one. So, she must have started, I guess she started with the town when she was nine years old, because this is for twenty years of service. So, be honest, before you started attending town council meetings, who knew what a town clerk does, right? Most of us have no idea what the town clerk does, but I'll tell you, she's the center of everything, and I know she's a huge resource for everyone on this couns, not just this council, but twenty years of councils. So, with that, I'd like to give Kim Ward her twenty-year plaque.
Kim, twenty years ago, almost today, were you and I, did we go through orientation together here at Carol and Caroline Beach when I came on the staff?
Wow. Congratulations to you.
She remembers. She has good memory. Am I right when I say that? I wasn't sure if it was you or Sarah.
Okay, next up on the agenda was Kevin Crawford. Is he here yet? I don't see him. So, we'll just move that down the agenda until he arrives. Does anybody know his schedule?
Yes, sir. I talked to him last week. He was not going to be able to be here until ten. I don't know what he looks like, so I can't tell you when he gets here, but he said ten o'clock he would be here.
He's not here.
Yeah, that's right. I apologize for the coughing. Seems to be a thing in this town this, the last couple of weeks. Okay, so we'll go on to beautification committee presentation. Cindy?
Good morning, Council, staff. And about the coughing, yes, it is going around.
Yeah.
We've had it at our house about two and a half weeks now.
Is that how long it took?
Yeah.
Because I'm in week two, and it still ain't gone.
Eleven days from, twelve days.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. I'm here this morning representing the beautification committee, going to do a little goals update for you guys. My name's Cindy Dunn, chairman of the town's beautification committee. As you look up there, go to the front page, there you go. Our mission, very simply, is to enhance the quality of life in our community. That is a quote from our goals, our mission and vision statement. And if you'll notice on this first page, we have native grasses and trees in holding areas in our Friends Nursery to help support our projects. All right, next page. A reminder of who we are, we're a nine-member-appointed volunteer advisory committee to the town council. Currently, we have one vacancy. We will be advertising for that in January, I believe. It will be on your agenda for January. And the beautification committee has cut their name short a little bit for publication and thing. We call ourselves BoCom, and we meet the first Wednesday monthly at 6:00 PM in the town hall, most of the time multipurpose room, but we can move around if we need to. We are always open to the public and encourage visitors to come. Our focus is hands-on, council-approved beautification projects that will enhance CB's community charm, bike and pedestrian-friendly environment. The picture that you see at the top of that page, there are three of our volunteers. We do workdays. This happened to be one of the workdays at the Carolina Beach Lake. All of this was this year. Our goals for '25, we recommend to council that, to encourage the update of the annual Tree City USA designation. I believe Jeremy has been handling that, so any updates that need to take place, we encourage you to stay with that. And we are the tree board for that program. So far, we haven't really had to do much, but we're available if you need us. We are also planning to keep our public beach access sponsorship program moving forward. Right now, we have, I believe it's twelve people who have spoken up for sponsorship, and we have several who have already done their accesses. Some of our change has included, they don't have to landscape, but they can keep the access clean on the ocean side and the beach side if they choose. And with that, they can either do that, landscape, or both, and they get to put one of their small, I believe it's six-by-eight signs, on the big north, on the big town sign that notifies the name of the access as you enter. We will continue to maintain our wildflower garden area on Bridge Barrier Road and support the Friends Nursery to hold the plants that we can have to use in our various projects. We will continue to work with various 501(c)(3) and other organizations such as NCWF, Friends of CB Parks and Greenways, Cape Fear Alliance of Trees, and I misspelled Tree, CB Trashwalkers, and other town committees and local groups pertinent to our mission. We also work, we've worked with Realtors Give Back Day and Doing Plantings. We've worked with other various organizations. Our group is an active group. We will, excuse me, continue to encourage council to include funds for beautification in the annual budget process. Basically, these funds would cover any watering. None of our projects will be successful without water. And, for instance, our landscape project that we did to the entrance sign coming on the north side of the bridge, we turned that over to the town because you all agreed for the watering there, and it's been maintained very well. It's my understanding now the town will be maintaining that particular area because of its location, and we don't want volunteers out there trying to get water and do other things because it's such a busy area. We did go out and do the plantings, and I believe Commissioner LeCombe was probably out there, too. But it was, it's a pretty dangerous area, so we've asked that the town take that over for maintenance and upkeep.
Cindy, on that last slide, can you flip back? There you go. I just want to know on the second two bullets, are you just asking us to continue to support those, or is there some action? When you say keep the sponsorship moving and continue to maintain?
On the...
Keep the, the public beach?
Yeah, 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 yeah. We're doing that.
You're just asking us to support?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay, got that.
That's what the beautification committee's goal, their goal.
Right, right.
Okay, I got you. I just want to make sure you weren't asking me to do something.
No, not yet.
Or if you were, I understood what you were asking me to do.
Yep, budget money for watering.
Okay.
Those pictures that you see up there are, we did a big project on Realtor Give Back Day in April, and we put, we planted a lot of our plants that the Trashwalkers had earned that had been maintained in the nursery. We've had some ups and downs with that area, as I think most of you know. We did have some e-bike riders having fun riding through part one end of it. We went back out there for a workday recently, and we've cleaned it up. We've put some more grasses out there that were actually donated to us from the bumpouts when the Realtors did another cleanup day here recently, and we split those, and we maintained them for a while in the nursery. And now those are now in the, most of those are in the ground, and we did some cleanup and actually built a fence, and we now have a bench out there that was donated by Matthew Shuttleworth. He built that at Jim Construction. He put one at this end, and he also has one up at the nursery end. So, he's done two benches, and we appreciate that. So, that's what those two pictures are. That's the front, the one with the sign is where you enter from Alabama, and the other one shows the other view as you're coming south towards the Alabama Avenue. All right, we can move forward to the next page. Nope, 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 back one, I'm sorry. This picture here is, I had put it in here, the last time I had been by there, that sign had not been replaced, but I will tell you this morning, I rode by there to make sure. It has been replaced. I don't know exactly when it was replaced, but there is a new sign up there. So, if the town talked to the state about it, thank you. If the state decided to do it, thank you. But there is a new Snows Cut sign up there. We always would like to encourage council to approve moving forward with various components of our master beautification plan for the lake park corridor. We presented that plan in '22, and it's been, it's a process. We know nothing's going to happen overnight, and we know that plan had a lot of action in it. So, we are hoping that you will take that plan and pick out pieces, parts of it, to approve some smaller projects that we can move forward with. That next, that first bullet, second bullet there, was about the Snows Cut Bridge sign, and like I said, that one has been, it's a new sign. We would like to...
Out of curiosity, so what was, what's the difference between the signs?
The...
The old sign and the new sign?
It was bombarded and beat up, and had moss growing on it, and it wasn't a good visual for coming over the bridge.
Got you.
I think somebody literally shot it with a shotgun.
I looked like it was shot with, yeah, I mean, it was obliterated.
That's what it looked like to me, too. Thank you.
We would like to continue efforts for you all to help us look at continuing efforts to improve the right-of-way area on Dow Road from Bridge Barrier intersection down to Elton or Glen. I know there's construction going on back behind that area now, but we've been told none of the driveways would come out across that back to Dow Road. So, I'd like for you all to, if we can put together a presentation, consider looking at it, but the biggest issue there again will be state approval, which we did get approval from them on plants for the original project on the north side of the bridge. So, those are the plants that we would present to them for there. The biggest issue will be watering. It is what it is. So, that one, that may come back to you all for, to look at, to see if that's something you want to do. We would like for you all to consider moving forward with choosing a design and location for a formal Welcome to Carolina Beach sign, ensuring that it's in place for the Centennial or soon thereafter. We originally presented, along with several other committees, the sign examples back in February, I believe, and we have had some more interest in it. I know Operations is interested in seeing this take place. It's just a matter of place. I believe our original presentation, the mayor, you notified us that there's possibly, when that bridge is replaced, may be some flaws that may go through some of these sites that we looked at, so I guess we need to pay attention to that and where it might be.
Yeah, that is true, but realistically...
It's going to be a ways down the road.
Yeah, it ain't going to happen in the next, if they started today, it probably wouldn't happen in ten years.
I would, I know.
Right.
I was real surprised when you even said that, because they said within five years. I don't think so.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have any schedule or know. I'm just know from how long these things take.
From what you saw in the, yeah. We also did a presentation along with Bike Ped and Operations regarding benches and placement of trees along the lake park corridor. We'd like for that to be considered at some point in time. I know there are places that were mentioned that probably are not good for them, but we would like to see that program move forward to give some space, some green space and rest area from the bridge down toward downtown. I know that there's, if we possibly get the sidewalk going from Carolina Sands South, there's probably not room along that route to put trees and benches because of the closeness of the property lines in there. And in closing, we have identified three projects. Fourth Street entrance to CB Lake, it's just kind of barren in there. We'd like to spruce that up some and maybe get some soft scape in there and maybe a tree or two that will just soften that area up some. Thank goodness, our council liaison, Mike, has worked very diligently with us, and we appreciate every effort he's done with regards to biking, pedestrian, planting, anything that's the outdoors. And we feel like that Fourth Street entrance is a major entrance to the lake from the residential side and the school side. We'd like to see it look a little better than it does, and he's working on a plan that we know we have to coordinate with the town forces because of the big pump station there and how they come in and out and that sort of thing, but that's one of the bigger projects we're looking at. We also have talked about your front entrance out here. We'd like to have some input into what goes on out there in that space where the palms were removed. It's just kind of there now. It would look much nicer if it were softened up a little bit. Water, again, is the big issue. Then Centennial Park, we know that's a big project. We know that the mural project will be doing the sculpture setting at the east end, I believe, is where it's going, but there will be opportunity for plantings and shade and soft space and hardscape with benches and things like that that we'd like to be able to comment on. I know we can't probably go in there and physically do it, but we'd like to be able to make comment on the plans for that park also. And in closing, we always need guidance from you on projects that you might like to see As we all know, first sight is usually your first impression of a town, and we want to make sure that this one has lots of charm to go along with it. We have some things we can do to add to some nice things that you have coming in, but we would like guidance from you all on projects you would like to see take place. And we thank you for allowing us to present today and your continued support.
Thank you, Cindy.
May I speak?
No. No, you can say whatever you want, Mike.
Well, thank you, Cindy.
You're welcome.
Cindy is a doer, y'all. So, Saturday, there was a citizen around the lake that had some concerns about the plantings we're doing and what we're doing. Look, I signed up for this when I ran for council. Cindy did not, but Saturday morning, we spent, what, an hour and a half out at the lake, just, you know, talking somebody through with the things we're doing and looking for improvements we can make, so that's kind of effort Cindy gives. Let's not forget her.
And I'd like to thank our members of our committee also. We have, we have one here and a little one, Sarah Finn and her little, and Matthew Shuttleworth from Operations is here. We've been, Matthew and I have been going back and forth about the sign, your welcome sign, so we'd like to see you all step that up. We know there's money in your budget that can do that. You've just got to find a proper location, and we would like to be included in your discussions to present some of the stuff we have found out about, so that's all I have.
So, a couple of questions. The Welcome to Carolina Beach sign?
Yeah.
Did you have documents before that showed like five or six different examples?
I did, I did.
Okay. I was talking to Brian Stansberry the other day about this, and I think the ball is rolling, and I think he was looking for those documents.
Well, I can resend them to you.
That'd be fantastic.
I'll send them to you.
And the second thing is, I know you work with the Trashwalkers...
Yep.
...on getting trees, and now the Trashwalkers, they must have thousands of plants and trees.
Well, we bankrupted the program. It no longer exists.
They no longer match our...
What?
They didn't expect you guys to take so many plants.
So, what happened there?
We changed their mind on some things.
Well...
We were picking up so much trash and collecting so many plants and trees that they said they couldn't support us anymore.
So, even the ones that we've earned, they've taken those back?
No, no, they gave us everything they ever promised.
Oh, really?
One hundred percent.
Now there's zero?
We have a zero balance now.
There's a zero balance?
It's kind of like when you join that rewards program, and then you got too many frequent flowers.
You have until February to use your points.
Right, pretty much, pretty much.
One of the things that happened was when Michelle and the Trashwalkers, and we all hooked up with the NCWF, she encouraged them to let us keep the plants here. Their basic program was trash picker-uppers would pick up trash, poundage, turn it in for plants, but then they would direct where these plants would go, and it was basically mostly around Piedmont Triangle area, up in that area, Western Park, wherever their activities were. We do now have a new NCWF person here in New Hanover County, and she has made contact with Michelle. I don't know exactly what they have talked about, but I do know that the poundage that you all are picking up is being weighed and used for...
Stormwater permit.
For the stormwater regulations that Brian has to deal with here, which is another good thing.
Yeah.
I just wish we could get some more trees from them, but we're working on it.
And we are still getting plants from the Realtors Give Back twice a year. They do a spring planting and a fall planting, so we are still getting plants and stuff from that. This fall, we actually propagated some of the grasses from the boardwalk, and those ended up, I think, on the Greenway, correct?
There's a lot of moving parts, a lot of partnerships of these, and BoCom deserves credit because they're the ones that kind of hold it all together. They do a lot of the organizing of it, of all different organizations, and a lot of the expert knowledge comes from the committee.
People from the committee.
Hey, I also, I also want to point out, I asked the committee to look at Centennial Park, not design it, but to, you know, gave them all, you know, gave them an aerial view of it, not to design the project, but to weigh in on it before we hire a landscape designer. That's what, that's their role. And I also would be remiss if I didn't point out that the beach access program, that had been laying down a little bit for a while. Stephanie Young's done, you know, Yeoman's work on that, it's kind of quiet, not dramatic, not high-profile work, but helping put that program back together. She deserves credit for that.
This is one of our recent accesses, Spartanburg, I believe.
That's nice.
Weston Williams, right?
That one. He's sponsoring a family, and you don't have, the way our program changed is you don't just have to be a business to sponsor, you could sponsor it for a friend or in memory of, whatever, and it's up to you what you want to do there. It's all at your expense. It's no expense to the town, so, but we've had a lot of interest pick back up recently, so we're hoping that we'll get some more of these soon. That's it.
Excellent.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you for everything you did. You're welcome.
Oh, and one last thing, sorry, before I forget. The Bike Ped Committee would like to come to fore at the next workshop if they could. Could we put them on for January?
Yeah, we don't, we don't have a December workshop, do we? Okay. Okay, next on the agenda is a public hearing for financing the new boardwalk restroom. Let me try to see if I can explain. Debbie, you fill in the gaps. So, we had this public hearing in the last council meeting. However, there is a requirement to advertise that public hearing, and evidently that didn't happen ten days prior, and not on our part, but the actual publisher didn't publish the notice, and then we had to provide some sort of affidavit saying, showing that it was published to the public, and so that didn't happen, so we're going to do this again. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Are you going to do the presentation again? I would assume we have to go through the whole thing?
Yes, I can explain again what the point of this was, in case there's anyone new in the audience that wasn't here at the other meeting.
Sounds good. Okay, so I'm just going to go ahead and open the public hearing. So, motion to open the public hearing for financing new boardwalk restrooms. Motion on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Debbie?
Okay. As I'd explained last time, we, or I sent out a request for proposals for seven financial lenders, requesting a $1,998, 147 loan for 15-year term. We received two responses. Truist came in at 397 at 15, and Atlantic Union was 4968 percent. And as I'd also mentioned, we went out for bid twice on this restroom. The second time, we were able to get the one bid, so that's, it's a little higher than we had anticipated, but this also includes a 10% contingency, and it's high because of the location of it, strategically, it's going to be very difficult for the contractor with the lay-down yards and stuff, and so on, so that's why that came in a little higher than anticipated. You have already approved the resolutions previously, so we just need to see if the public has any questions or comments regarding this project.
Okay, so would anyone from the public like to speak on this matter? Going once, going twice? Okay, then motion to close the public hearing. Do you need us to vote again, or you?
No, since you'd already previously approved the resolutions moving forward, we just were required statutorily to have this public hearing again with a 10-day notice.
Got you. Any concerns from council for that process? Okay, thank you, Debbie. Next up is discussion of traffic calming devices. This is probably the most given presentation.
I know, we're doing this again.
I think this is my, I think this is my fourth time through this.
Why don't you just change the date on it?
Yeah, it's very similar. As we discussed this in August, well, staff is ready to implement it, and again, just, you know, at time to time, we do get citizens to request, hey, I'd like a stop sign put up here, or I think we need to change the speed limit there, but we don't really have a clear process and approval review of these types of requests, so staff would like to create a policy and include this in your packet for the upcoming council meeting for you to review and to officially just to adopt. And the WMPO has been here, they've given the presentations on options for traffic calming devices that are available. We would like to include them as part of the review process when we look at these. And basically, the procedure would be to create an application, because right now, we don't even have an application, and really to have that community acceptance of the residents who are going to be impacted by this request, and we want to have some type of buy-in or know that it's been, they've considered it. And there's a DOT requirement. Other communities that have traffic calming procedures have the 60% threshold of the residents that live off that street of where it's proposed is to sign essentially the application. There's a petition on the back of the application for them to put their address and their signature if they support it, or... And then, also, when we review it, the street, we would not want it to be installed on any primary emergency or truck route. Usually, truck routes are your DOT routes, but primary routes are the DOT streets in your major thoroughfares, Cape Fear Boulevard, St. Joseph. There is a... There is a sixth street, and this is what emergency vehicles rely on, and they train on to access these streets and, you know, to meet certain criteria that they have to for emergency response times and to be accredited.
Jeremy, can you define 60% of residents or owners? Is that a signature from each property address? Or if 10 people live in the house, can 10 people sign it? I mean, how does that?
So we would want to, 60% is, represents the household, so the unit.
Okay, so 60% of the units?
Yes.
Okay.
And we would clarify that in the policy, but that's what we're looking for, not just that 15 people are claiming the same address.
Right.
That would count as one.
Got you.
And the 60%, there's a recommendation there? Where did we come up with that 60% number?
It was based off DOT standards. It's what they have in their manual.
That's on any given street.
Correct.
Well, this is, this is just a preview here right now.
It is. Nothing's written in stone.
It seems too low to me.
I think it's too low.
What was that?
Or you think it's 60's too high or too low? It seems too low to me.
That, my inclination, yes, is too low.
Too low, yeah.
I haven't really thought this through yet.
All right, we can talk about that next time.
Okay. And then, of course, we wanted to just review by technical review committee. We had the public safety there, also traffic engineers, whatever we feel that needs to have input on the issue. And then we would present what the applicant's asking for, what the request was, and what, some options, and what TRC's recommendation is. And then there's also, depending on what type of traffic calming device it is, is what is the cost associated at? Who pays for it? Maybe something that needs to be budgeted. So we would have those discussions with council at that time as well. And then if council does approve it and signs off on it, then staff will do the installation of that device. And again, and sometimes it works the other way, too. There may be a speed hump, or there may be a traffic calming device, or that occurred a couple of years ago, and now the citizen's like, we don't really need this. This hampers us. We would like to get it removed, and you essentially would follow the same process to get that removed, and council would approve it.
Will the policy have how that's funded? Or are you assuming we'll decide on a case-by-case basis how those are funded?
Depending on what it is, it would be case-by-case. You know, if it's just a sign, if it's more like you're having to relocate the curb, or some type of choker, or...
Okay, so you're saying we don't know how big or small they might be asking for, so we don't know?
Correct. And that's something that will be discussed through TRC, and that will be part of the recommendation, would be the, who's going to bear the cost.
Okay.
Hey, making, having a policy makes, a process and a policy makes sense in us. It's not ad hoc every single time it comes up. The other thing to consider while we're putting this together for the more formal presentation is, when we talk about the, you know, the proposed street. So say people on the 1600 block of Mackerel want something. Does somebody all the way down on the 1100 block of Mackerel fall into that proposed street? Or is it just that block?
Just that block, yeah.
Well, if I live the street over from Mackerel, and Mackerel wants to put in, well, Mackerel wants to put in speed bumps. They're just going to direct all the traffic to me. So do they whole street?
Of course, that's where TRC looks at things as well.
Yeah, right now, it'd be...
A block at a time.
And that's definitely something we can look into.
Right.
But the idea was it'd be the residents on that street.
Okay. Well, I guess they could always come and speak against it if they didn't want it.
You could have four houses on a block.
Right.
Right.
It's got to be, Mackerel's Mackerel.
But at the direction of council, staff will formalize this policy and send that to you.
I think it's a great, I agree with Mike. I think it's a great idea to have a policy, because this comes up all the time, and then everybody kind of goes, what do we do? And then it kind of never happens. But at least to the resident, it would be on a, you know, there's a process now, which I think would be good. Anybody disagree with that?
No, I agree. I mean, just the fact that it goes to TRC is a good thing, right? So they can go through the process, and it's got to be reviewed.
Well, it also...
There's got to be a cause, there's got to be a reason.
It also makes it less political, like you don't get the situation where an influential member of the community comes in, has speed bumps, and then they sell and move. And now those people hate the speed bumps, they're left, and, you know, different councils in place. And then, you know, this is like, no, there'd be a standard process for everybody.
See, so I've heard of HOAs approve speed bumps, and they pay for it. And I've heard also the other side of the coin. Once they don't like them and they have them removed, it's their responsibility to...
Well, that's probably referring to HOAs that own their streets. It's a little different story. They don't really, like, well, just for sake of argument, Lighthouse Drive, for instance, they own their street. Can they put in speed bumps without town approval, since they own their street?
A private street, they could. I mean, it doesn't take a council approval.
That's what I mean, like, they, since they own their street, they could do it without town approval. That we're therefore remove them as well, if they want.
Exactly.
Now, you need other questions?
Jeremy?
I think I've got what I need, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Jeremy.
This meeting may not last for our Matsu guy to get here.
I know, right?
Stall.
Stall, okay.
Well, I can talk about pets all day, so...
Yeah. So next on the agenda is discussion of installing Rainbow Bridge at the lake. Deb?
Yep, Jeremy, if you got my, or Ed? All right, so in September, two days before Helene had, I was in Lake Lure with some, with some ladies from here attending a wedding. And of course, we went to the Flowering Bridge, and I took pictures of the Rainbow Bridge that was there. And so it kind of piqued interest in many residents of the town. So I was approached to put something together to see if we could get approval on this, to get this started. Two days later, it was destroyed and is gone in Lake Lure. So Jeremy, we have, you'll, everybody in Carolina Beach just about has a pet, whether it's a dog, or cat, or both, or birds, or lizards, or rabbits. So I think we're a pet, we're a pet-oriented community. And I think that this would be a great tribute to our animals. Jeremy, next slide. So this is the one they just installed in Folly Beach recently, and on either side of the bridge, it has the sign with the poem, the Rainbow Bridge poem on it, which, a little interesting tidbit about the poem. It actually was written in 1959 by Edna Klein. She was 19 years old, and she lived in Ironness, Scotland, and her Labrador Retriever, Major, died. And it was the first pet that had been, her family had many pets before, but that was the first pet they had that was her very own. And so she sat down and wrote this poem after her dog passed away.
Is that where the concept of Rainbow Bridge came from?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes, so it's actually a poem, and that's the poem that's on the sign you see there. So if you meet your pet in the afterlife, you can thank her because she created this. So next slide. So this is the actual bridge that was in Lake Lure, and this was on, like I said, September 22nd. And two days later, the town of Lake Lure and Chimney Rock are basically gone. So there is a push, you can go ahead and go to the next slide, to create the bridge. And these are just some pictures that I took here. So what they do is they take, they paint the slats on the bridge for the colors of the rainbow, and then people come and put their collars of their lost pets on the bridge itself. Next slide, Jeremy. They also had a painted rock garden, which I love this feature, but we might want to look at this a little bit differently because of future flooding at the lake could possibly, you know, cause issues with that. Okay, next slide, Jeremy. Who's slide, Ed or Jeremy? Okay, so this is where we're proposing, is on the bridge that's on the south side of the lake, that's right at Lake Drive. The first proposal was the bridge that goes over to Veterans Island, and then I said, no, we don't want to take anything away from the veterans, so let's put it at a different location. So this is the location that we're proposing. The task would be just to paint the slats on the bridge and get the signs for either side. And that would be, that would be where the cost would be. Next slide. And of course, this would be a community project, and you can see all these different ways we have of fundraising and also having members of the community help. And I'm sure I would be reaching out to Cindy, of course, to help as well, so. Next slide. That's it. So it's, I've been, I've had many people reach out to me about doing this, and I'd just really like for us to consider doing it. And I don't think it's going to cost, it's not going to be a lot of cost. And that's it. And happy to answer any questions.
I'm going to sound like Debbie's, I don't have a problem with this, but I'm just trying to think through your operationally. So how long do those leashes stay there forever? Or I mean, what do you, so what do you do when it just gets covered?
What they did in Lake Lure is they actually built an extension, just a, like a banister extension.
Yeah.
It was one of the slides I hit, let's see, go back.
Yeah, I mean...
That bridge is much bigger than the one that was there. But you can see, there's an extension over here, just another, they built like more banisters over on the side.
I guess we could deal with that problem when it becomes a problem.
But I think it'll take a while to fill that, because that bridge is, that bridge is much bigger than the one in Lake Lure.
The only other question I have really is for maybe Bruce, is just in terms of safety of the bridge, I don't know if there's any... I don't know if putting them over the rail is going to be allowed, or maybe you need to put a rail beside the rail, or, I don't know. I'm not proposing anything here, I'm just saying, just make sure we're not violating some sort of safety rule somewhere.
Yeah, I was going to say, at the risk of sounding like a stick in the mud, that is a narrow bridge, and I've had, I'd say awkward interactions with people passing them on that bridge already, if this is going to like squish it.
Yeah.
Yeah. When I was, I mean, just off the top of my head, I hadn't really put a lot of thought into this, is you could always put a rail beside the rail that's, you know, something, you come up with something.
Or you just go from leash to leash.
But those are narrow bridges, and it's kind of funky, like if I'm on my bicycle and I get off and I'm pushing my bike, it's hard to pass somebody coming the other direction. So if a lot of leashes and knickknacks squeeze it even more, that could wind up being problematic.
So I think what I'm hearing is general support, but you need to look and see what the logistics are and figure.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know how to, I don't want to design it on a fly.
Just, we'll just follow through, and we'll...
Staff will work with Mayor Pro Tem to get the ball rolling.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
Thanks, guys.
All right.
I love the idea of that.
Yeah, I mean, my first impression was I didn't want it at the lake, but then I couldn't come up with a better place, so I didn't say anything.
Well, we thought about the bridge that's on the Greenway, but then we also thought about vandalism. It'd be out of sight, out of mind.
Yeah, and it's also a Matsu space.
It's also a Matsu space, so...
I think it'd be a cool addition.
I couldn't come up with anything better, so...
All right, thank you.
All right, our gentleman from Matsu is still not here, and we got 20 minutes. Ed, tell us about your time, no, I'm sorry.
So we did, we did hear from DOT, and the, looking at the speed limit on Ocean. They said those studies typically take about 12 weeks, so they, or hopefully we'll get back to those 12 weeks.
All right, so let's, you want to go ahead and do council comments and...
Sure, wait, and then, if we can, if we can, I mean, we could even, Jurner just have him do a presentation to them in general to...
Yeah, we could.
I guess we wouldn't, Jurner, because y'all wouldn't be able to sit there, but you could have him do a presentation when he gets here.
Okay, let's do council comments and see how this works out, whatever. Start that in, Deb?
I just, can we look at the process of annexing Freeman Park? I think we need to get that into the town limits, because as it stands, it's currently in unincorporated county. So I think we need full control of our property.
Wasn't that part of the plan, Bruce, at some point?
At some point, there were some legal concerns at first, but I think all that's been cleared up. There's still this, the one section that we got to figure out, but I'll give a null, so we can get that process started.
Um, just a reminder, Island of Lights has the light at the lake Friday at 6:30. Please come out and enjoy getting ready for the Christmas season to start. And also, Cindy, I want to get with you, because I've talked with Brian already about working on Memorial Garden behind the History Center, getting that all cleaned out, because we have some beautiful azaleas back there, and we just need to get it so it's an area where you can actually, so you can actually enjoy it, so...
It is beautiful, those things are...
That's what I got.
All right, Jay?
So, actually, I really didn't have any, but since you brought up Freeman Park, I know we were supposed to have a tribute to the Freemans out there, and where are we on that process?
Our plan is wait until we get the final guidance from Justin, who's, I can't remember Justin's last name, but Land Water, doing their final statements or whatever for conservation planning, so we can get that, and then form a committee, and then start working on those items.
Yeah. Okay.
We just want to make sure that Brenda Freeman and her sister are included in whatever we do out there.
I assume it would be.
Yeah.
You know, that entrance way we have over there by Publix into that little Civil War area?
Yep.
Thing going over there, that's pretty cool. We could do something like that.
The only question I had was, I'm sorry, was, Kim, did we ever, I know when we declared a state emergency for PTC eight, we were waiting on the county to rescind that, and I don't recall signing anything, so I assume...
They just rescinded, I believe it was last Friday, so we, yeah.
Okay, so we can go ahead and do that.
Yeah, you can make, do it right now, we can sign it afterwards.
What do I need to do? Just make a motion? Or do I just declare, the mayor just declare?
Yeah, you can just declare it over.
Okay, so I declare the state of emergency for PTC eight over. Is that good enough? And you need me to sign something at some point? Okay. All right, let's all ahead, Mike?
I'm wearing my day job shirt today because I'm proud to announce I'm now a certified electrical inspector.
Oh, congratulations.
Like that, Bruce?
Good job.
Hardest test I ever took, really. But shouldn't it be hard? I mean, you're...
Yeah, if you're resident of electricity, I would think it'd be hard.
The last Bike Ped meeting, we had a couple of interesting things come up. Derek McNeil had made a great presentation about some places in town we could improve public lighting at some crosswalks and such, and I think that'll be coming along to you in the new year, and I think you'll like that. It's hard to disagree with the recommendations he was making. And the Bike Ped group also voted to officially recommend an official speed limit on the Greenway. Now, 12 miles an hour is what they put out there. I'm not naive enough to think that putting up a sign means everybody's going to all of a sudden play nice. But other communities have established speed limits. It does make for talking points. If the, the bike, you know, CB Bike Police Patrol is out there, it just helps them to educate the public a little bit more. So do I expect us to go out with a radar gun and do a speed trap on the Greenway? No, I don't, but I think it's worth doing. So I know that that's a bigger process than just we throw a sign out there. I get that.
Well, actually, is it? I mean, because like, speed limits on roads are via ordinance, right? So they're, so requiring ordinance change from council to change the speed limit on the road, right? Because it's in, written in the ordinances.
Yes, sir.
What about on a Greenway? Would that be in there, or is that just a, I don't mean to sound, it's not important, but is it just a decoration at that point?
I'm not sure, I think we'd have to look at it and see.
Yeah, I think we'd have to create some kind of ordinance or something.
That was my understanding. This came up before.
Okay, okay.
Okay, and then the topic nobody feels like talking about, but I will anyway, is parking, yay. You know, to the public who's wondering, why isn't it on the agenda today? Then my answer to that question has been that we don't have enough information right now to have a formal conversation about it. Is it being discussed? Is it being considered? Is it being researched? The answer is yes, and I know that to be a fact. That being said, any changes we make, I think we need to start working our way backwards in the calendar here. So we have a January regularly scheduled meeting. I think if we're going to make changes for 2024, you guys know, I've made my personal recommendation, that needs to get done at the January meeting. And if that's going to get done at the January meeting, that tells me that there should be a first reading or a first discussion at our December meeting. So that's how I'm looking at this personally. So here we are in November. I think Bruce, I hope that you guys could rally up some info for us to discuss in December. I know you're working diligently on this, but that's all I have to say. I just think we got to be thinking about the timeline here.
I don't disagree with Mike in that, I mean, the ball's in staff's court right now, I think that's what we're waiting on. But I sort of agree with Mike, it's on your schedule of when you're going, you know, how are you going to execute next year's program? Whatever decisions you need us to make. Uh, I, I sort of agree with Mike, it's on your schedule of when you're going, you know, how you gonna execute next year's program, whatever decisions you need us to make.
And Ja- January, we will be already selling passes under the current system, so. You, you would, you would uh, either be issuing a lot of refunds or if making changes.
Do you have to sell them, do you have to sell them in January? I'm, I'm not trying to delay it, I'm just trying to figure out.
By, according to our current ordinance, yes, you have to, we have to start um.
January first?
January one, um, December one, we start with Freeman Park, January one, we do the golf cart, um, and resident passes, all that starts then, so.
But, but is it that date be, I mean, parking doesn't start for two more months after that.
It's listed, it's listed. It's listed in, that's how it works in your um, your budget um, book, which you adopt by ordinance and we're, we're bound to follow. So if you wanna do something.
We can always amend the ordinance, but if you needed, if we, but, but what we can do is, we've been working, as you, as Councilman Hoffa just said, working diligently with the Army Corps. And getting questions answered, working on things, we're working with Pivot, running different scenarios. We can have some um, ideas and recommendations and stuff to discuss in December, whether it's adopted or not, we can always call a.
Always have a special meeting.
Special meeting, yeah, to get it done by.
Well, I think we should also look at just basically amending and saying, if we can't start selling on January one, then we push that date forward. Whatever we have to do legally.
I don't wanna make a rash decision because we're trying to meet a date.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, if, if it comes down to it, we vote to not sell January one. Whatever we decide to do.
I think it, I think you need to, I think staff needs to, we don't know what you need.
Okay.
In the schedule and the operational aspects of it, and we don't know where you are in your fact finding, so you guide us.
Alright, we'll plan to present as much information, as detailed information as we can at the, the December meeting. So you guys can, we can move from there, whether it's that night or.
Yeah, and if you say you gotta have it by January one, and you think you've got enough information, we either vote then, I'd rather not vote then, I'd, I'd quite honestly, I'd rather have a special meeting than.
Yeah.
Yeah. You gotta get the information and then vote on it at the same time.
Alright.
One of the things I do appreciate about the way school board works.
Doing the workshop, but we don't have a workshop that month.
Right, though I've always appreciated, I think is a good thing that the school board does, is before implementing any policy, they always have a first reading at a meeting. You know, with the understanding, we're not going to vote to implement this thing, it's a first reading, gives everyone time to, to discuss it in a um, public forum. Then go home and think about it, and talk to your constituents, and vote later, so I, I like that process and.
If you have time, it's great.
If, if you have time, of course, of course. I could uh, tell you, I could filibuster a little longer and tell you about my time as a burn boss, you guys wanna hear about that?
No.
I was just thinking about the Matsu guy.
We got eight minutes, how about we take a ten minute recess and see if this guy shows up, is that okay?
That works.
Alright, and for those in the, uh, just make sure everybody's aware, whether you wanna hang around or not, is evidently, I guess there's an upcoming prescribed burn by Matsu. Is anybody, and, and the, the Matsu person's gonna be here to explain what they're doing and why they're doing it, is that the purpose? Okay, so we'll take a ten minute recess and come back in ten minutes, does that sound good? Give you some water. We will hear, when he is ready, we will hear from Kevin Crawford from Matsu.
NIMS was National Incident Management System, I think, this big long federal course, to be allowed to be. Even if you wanna just volunteer for the park for their fires.
You had to go through this.
Processes. Dawn Betts retired from beautiful case, she said, love of Caroline.
I can do, yeah, I just don't have any issues.
Oh, does she, no, I didn't know that.
The one that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's insane.
You have the floor, sir.
That's a good spot, good spot.
Yep, that's your spot.
Awesome.
And we appreciate you coming, and we, we just got through a, a few minutes early, but you're, we're fine, so just continue.
I'll take as long or as quick as you need me to take.
Somewhere in the middle.
Somewhere in the middle.
Really informal, if so, when I'm going through stuff, and I'm sorry I don't have visual, I brought slides, but we're not gonna be able to, to put them up so everybody can see them. But uh, if you have questions, please ask, stop me and ask me, and, and I'll try not to go down too many rabbit holes, uh, and try to be short and sweet. Uh, first of all, uh, my name's Kevin Crawford, I'm the Natural Resources Manager for Military Ocean Terminal of Sunny Point. Uh, been online about thirteen months now, um, came over from Fort Bragg, where I spent the last twenty-six years doing natural resources management. And you guys, you guys, you guys, I'm trying to figure out who I talk to, is it just you guys or everybody else?
Um, you're addressing council, but uh, you are being recorded and online, so just make sure you kinda speak toward the microphone.
So, I'll just talk to you guys and it's, sorry if I, if I, if I don't uh, look over here every now and then. Anyway, I've come from Fort Bragg, twenty-six years of natural resources management, uh, a native of North Carolina, a frequent visitor to the Cape Fear area. My folks have a place across the river and we're over here at Carolina Beach, Curry Beach, quite often doing touristy stuff and grabbing some doughnuts of grits and all that kinda stuff, so. Real familiar with the area coming in, I was really happy with the opportunity that I got to come over here and really uh, move to uh, overall natural resources, natural resources manager at Matsu. Uh, as part of uh, the interview process, uh, they made it known to me that the habitat that the Army owns on this side of the river. Uh, had not been managed very well, and uh, there were some fuel issues, the natural resource management hadn't been done well, there's, there's heavy uh, forest fuels. And that they really wanted me to tackle that and get into uh, better ecological management, but also from a, from a good neighbor perspective. We need to be able to manage our fuels to reduce impacts to our neighbors like Carolina Beach and Curry Beach and the folks that are around us, so. Uh, got on the ground and started running, pretty much two weeks after I got on board, I was over here working with my contractors. And if you're all aware, the, the, the mulching operations that we've got going on, that was huge, getting that started and, and getting, working through that, so. Uh, that's part of the process, that's my introduction, I, I'll go with, I'll go through my slides and I'll talk to you as I, as I got them. Um, as, as I got it prepared, and then like I said, you got any, you got any questions, please ask. Um, the introductions, I'm, I'm gonna go through the habitat management in general. It's something uh, very similar that I did back at Fort Bragg, I had a five thousand acre parcel of land that went around the city of Fort Bragg, and if you're not familiar with that particular area, it is a small city. It's uh, it doesn't, it's not Fayetteville, and it's not Charlotte, but it is a good sized city, and so we had to manage it accordingly. Uh, smoke management, um, fuels management, because of all the, 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 the Army infrastructure, the motor pools, the housing. Everything that happens in any city happens on Fort Bragg, so that was one of the concerns that we had to do there, one of my tasks was to take this five thousand acre block. And manage it better, we had to manage it through fire, there was some ecological stuff that I really, I don't really care about, I'm not gonna go into that, but. We needed to do that, and that was the model that I'm using for this particular area. Um, that's, that's the model that I'm using for the explosive safety clearance zone, that's what we're calling this piece of land.
Oh, we have a new term.
We have a new term, explosive city, uh, sorry, explosive safety clearance zone. For those that have been around here forever, the, the buffer zone.
Right, yep.
Same, 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 same type thing, and uh, sorry, it's a small picture, but this is how to, how I've divided it all up into small blocks. Okay, these are small management areas, something that I can grab a hold of, I can get in and work quick, um, have some uh, breaks in them, be able to stagger management. Um, right now, I'm looking at thirty-five management blocks, that's all of it from uh, the State Park, all the way down towards Fort Fisher. There's one block that I've gotta talk with the folks at Fort Fisher to see what they want me to do, what they're comfortable with me doing in there. It is our property, but as, as neighbors and people who use the outlands, that, that we have some pieces that are part of that property, I wanna make sure that you guys are. Comfortable, or, or at least I'm not stepping on toes uh, for things that you want to do in those pieces that, that we've uh, assigned to you guys for ball fields or whatever, that type stuff. Um, I'm looking to target sixty acres as my largest block, so it's really, really manageable, especially from fire, that's mostly a fire issue, prescribed fire. Um, sixty acres, I can get in and get out pretty quick, once we get the fire uh, going, we can get the smoke up, get the smoke out real quick. And it's something that we can manage with a small team and the small resources that I have at this point. So, about sixty acres is what I'm looking at, right now, all of them are way under sixty, except for, I think there's two, that may be, or seventy or so.
I think it's thirty-five.
Sorry?
There's thirty-five blocks.
Yes ma'am, thirty-five blocks at this point, if, if it grows, um, it'll grow to thirty-six, and then I may do sub, I may sub, subdivide some areas, I was along the river yesterday and I was like. Yeah, I might be able to break this one up a little bit. Um, the purpose of habitat management within the DOT, there's lots of, there's lots of reasons for habitat management, it's all about your objectives, but within DOT. Um, our first objective is support a military mission, um, although we don't, we are an operations base, I came from a large training facility, training uh, base. So it was a little bit different when coming to Matsu, we are an operations facility and we don't do operations on this side of the river. There is opportunity for small squad-like training events down the road, if somebody from Fort Bragg calls and says, hey, we'd like to do some land nav or something. We can provide that opportunity, I think, but mostly we're an operations installation. On this side of the river, we're not really doing any operations, it is a safety issue, alright, so catastrophic events that would happen on the river. Uh, they have an arc that, that kinda encompasses the, the extent of that catastrophic, or major extent of that catastrophic uh, event. This buffer zone is that safety arc that goes around our operations area, which you all probably know that, but I really wanted to state that. Without that, we're going to, we could potentially, if something would, would go wrong, uh, we could, we could put people in, in jeopardy, we could put stuff in peril. If we were allowed for that area to, to, to grow up and, and be urban, urban interface type stuff, so, we don't do that, but it is our responsibility to manage it. And so, and that's why I'm here, the other part is to promote sustained environmental stewardship, uh, the DOT has always gotten behind being a good stewards of the environment. So we're pushing for ecological management, we're pushing for sustainability of, of rare species and rare habitats, which we have part of that, the longleaf ecosystem that we have in the, in the Southeast United States. Um, so we're, so we're, we're probably, we're, we're doing that too, the DOT has a, a, a overall natural resources program. Of which uh, supports military mission through ecological management, uh, threatening rare species, some of these I've already mentioned, reducing uh, strikes. We're on, where I came from, we had a lot of air, so airplanes, helicopters, that type stuff, so bird strikes. Here, we have water strikes, we have sea turtles and stuff that's in the water sturgeon, all the stuff that's uh, rare, plus the other, any, any big uh, animals that come up through the river. We wanna make sure we, we minimize strikes, special strikes for those, for those organisms, so uh, that's part of it. Managing wildland fuels and fire, which is one of the real big reasons that I'm here. Invasive species, which is a bad problem across, across the way, I know we have fragmities around here, we have fragmities around here, and that's, and that's a, that's a real challenge. Uh, for anybody that's, that's managing that, and then uh, landscape resiliency, climate, uh, climate change is, is big on everybody's, the. Top of everybody's list right now, and so we're trying to do what we can to, to limit impacts from climate change, all that fits into a big natural resources package. That I'm supposed to be working on when I'm doing and, and prescribing habitat management for, for the Army installation. Overall, conservation of, conserving of biodiversity on DOT installations is key, operational readiness is a big term now, and that's, that, that just goes to. Uh, are we doing what we need to do at one hundred percent, you know, for, for the military, for, for national defense, for our partners? Are we, are we at operational readiness, are we at that point where when we get the phone call, we can go? And, and that's where I have to keep it in the back of my mind, the management that I'm doing and what I'm promoting for the installation always keeps it, keeps us at that level. Community safety is the next thing that's part of it, and I actually added it to our, our overall objective for our management plan, community safety is huge here, it's a lot bigger than it is back home, I don't have the urban interface. There that I have here, so that's gotta be at the forefront of all our planning and, and thought process. So we're gonna talk about, uh, well, I talked about native ecosystems just a little bit, we do have rare species uh, that we have to worry about, federal endangered, federal threatened. Uh, candidate species, that type thing, uh, but we also talk about just regular uh, ecosystems in general, like I said, Long Lake Pond ecosystem. Uh, the, the ground cover, the, the flowering plants, the stuff that, the beauty stuff, when you drive down, down road and you can look in the woods after I get done with it, hopefully. And it's just like gorgeous, and everybody's like loving it because of the way it looks now, so that aesthetic part of it, the fuels management is the other piece. Um, wildfires are a bad thing, if, if you've never been around or never seen wildfires, especially in an area that's never been tended to prevent wildfire destruction. It can be, it can be a game changer in, in an instant, you know, where I came from, we had drop zones, the home of the eighty-second Airborne. And that was one of the things we always talked about, we don't wanna create drop zones, so we manage, we manage the timber, we manage the land, so if a wildfire does go through there. It'll burn through and burn up the available fuels, not all of the fuels, and we don't create drop zones through death of timber, you know, we wanna manage our timber better. So, that's part of it, um, the impacts from wildfire also on the urban environment, if we don't manage the fuels in our, in our clearance zone. Uh, yeah, clearance zone, um, how can we stop them, if a wildfire breaks out, how can we stop them, are the fire breaks maintained, are the fuels at adequate level? So that we can get in on the ground, whether it's Matsu, whether it's Carolina Beach Fire Department, Curry Beach Fire Department, the NC Forest Service, whoever it is, can we get to that fire before it gets to the city? We wanna, cause we've got a dense urban interface on the eastern side, we wanna make sure we can protect all the infrastructure and the people that are in, that are in that thing. How are we gonna do this, we're gonna do it through prescribed fire, I am planning a little bit of thinning, I think there's opportunity, especially on this, on this northern side, closest to your, your municipality. It's dense, it's really dense, so I'd like to do some thinning uh, in the future, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to or not. Some of those things are still in question, getting people in or getting equipment in and getting logs out, that type of thing, and I don't wanna disrupt too much. But over, I think if it's an overall positive uh, for the area, I would like to promote that, so that's something I'm looking at. Uh, reducing the vegetation mechanically, we're already doing that, we're removing or replacing that fuel from a vertical arrangement to a horizontal arrangement, why is that important? Um, if fire goes up, fire will eventually get into the canopy, if it gets into the canopy, I can't do anything about it, it's done, it's gone, and it's gonna go until it doesn't wanna go anymore. That's the dangerous part, if I can keep the fuel and the fire on the ground, I can work with it and I can manage it, and I can keep it where it needs, where it's supposed to be. Um, we can also do stuff by hand, we can also do stuff by herbicide, I don't, I don't wanna do a whole lot of herbicide, especially around uh, urban areas. But there is that option, we could do some spot treatments on herbicide uh, moving forward. I talked about uh, understory management, timber management, prescribed fire, those are my three main habitat management uh, tools that I'm going to be using, uh, what does it look like? So, I come from a, I come from a big background in managing red cockaded woodpecker, which is a federally listed endangered species. And the management that goes along with the federal, with that, with the particular species, it's something I'm very familiar with, I've got many years of background of experience in working and managing for this particular uh, species. We have them here, we have them on Matsu, um, the area that we're talking about, the, the zone that we're talking about, the habitat is perfect and ideal for that particular species. We don't have them on this side of the river because the habitat's not that great, it's not in a, in that great shape. Um, I feel like, once I get done, we're gonna be in prime habitat for that particular species, and the potential down the road, I don't know how far down the road, I can't tell you. But there could be potential down the road where we might bring that species and put it in over here, uh, in a partnership, I'm hoping, with Carolina Beach State Park, I've already been in conversations with those guys over there. And um, that's something we might be able to do down the road, so, I tell you that because that's how I want to manage this particular ecosystem, that with this part, this track of land, uh, that's what it, that's what I want it to be. Um, and that's gonna consist of larger older pines, low density of small, medium pines, lower hardwood, mist stories, so lower oaks, where they're, where they're supposed to be. Because we're here on the coast and because we're sandy, we do have uh, domes and, and small pockets of live oaks and that type of stuff, I'm not trying to get rid of those or anything. But manage them and to make it a better structure and, and complete the composition, because, so the ecosystem could uh, can function at a high, high rate. And then ground cover, we talked about um, wildflowers before, we're gonna see a bunch of wildflowers, once I get down the road a little bit in this management, wildfires are gonna be a big thing. I haven't seen any Venus flytraps on this side of the river yet, but I wouldn't doubt there would be some. I haven't seen any Venus flytraps on this side of the river yet, but I wouldn't doubt there would be some over here. So, those, those are the kind of the target species that I'm looking for, the rare stuff that, and, you know, I saw one outside, outside the door here, y'all got a statue out there. So, it's real big for this area and, and there's a lot of community involvement. So, if I can do that, I can bring the community in and get them pumped up a little bit. The mulching stuff, this is a, this is a map that's going, that, that I've got right now. Everything in red, that's my phase one. If you've been down Dow Road anytime soon, you've seen all, all that we've done. The blue stuff is, is down towards the FAA tower, we're gonna be working down there. That's, we're, we're moving out of the red area into the blue area. Everything north of K Avenue is complete from a, from a mulching perspective. I'm ready to start fire now, okay? Fire, if you've never seen prescribed fire, here's some good examples of what prescribed fire looks like. Eight-foot flames, so I'm about, I'm just under six foot, so a little bit taller than me. As long as I can keep those flames down and on the ground, we're gonna be good to go. I don't want any raging fires over here. I don't want people driving off the road looking at fire because it's so, you know, shocking. I want it to be kind of mundane, oh, there's a fire and we've got people and we're good to go. So, nothing too extravagant, nothing too extreme moving forward with prescribed fire. And really, prescribed fire for the most part shouldn't be, shouldn't be extreme. It should be well, it should be controlled to whatever degree, you know, we can control it based on the prescriptions that are right. Which leads into this year. For FY twenty-five plan, which for the, for the Army, for the federal government, we go, we work on fiscal year starting in October. So, we're already in our FY twenty-five, even though we're in calendar year twenty-four. Working and talking with the folks over at Carolina Beach State Park, and I know they burn a lot, so I immediately started picking their brain. What do you do, how do you do, what's your coordination, this, that and the other? Jesse Anderson's over there, was real quick to say, look, we've got easterly winds in the winter. That's the time to do it, perfect time to do it. That's too easy, I love it, because it takes the smoke and it puts it over on me and it keeps it off of you guys. So, all of my prescriptions, they've all been written, I turned them into the North Carolina Forest Service yesterday, so they've got their copy of it. All of the prescriptions are gonna run off, off an east wind or easterly wind, so northeast, east, southeast, that type of thing. Particularly to keep the smoke off of you guys, alright? Now, understand that's the main smoke column. There's always gonna be switches, there's always, there's always gonna be residual smoke, especially at night when the inversion sets in and the smoke can't get up. So, the main column, the one that really, when you hit the fire and you burn, you burn your, your leaves in the yard, that main column, I'm gonna push that to the east. But, you're gonna get phone calls and people are gonna, not gonna be happy because they smell smoke, alright? I, I just, I, I, when I, when I gave this brief to the, the fire department last month, that was one of the things we talked about, you guys are gonna get phone calls. And I, you know, I'm sorry, I'll do what I can to minimize those, but at the end of the day, the smoke's gonna go where it goes and the weather's gonna go where, what, push it where it wants to. With my prescriptions, I am trying to minimize that by pushing the smoke back to the west. We are gonna do dormant season. Dormant season is for me, November through the end of March. I really wanted to get over here done by the end of January, but I've had no rain. And because I've had no rain or lot, you know, we had all the, September sixteenth, we had all that rain and we really hadn't had anything since then. And so, the ground is dry, especially over here where we've not burned for a while. We've got a lot of organic fuel on the ground. Organic fuel, when it's dry, will burn and it will smolder and it will smolder for months. I don't want that to happen over here. So, I have to have some more rain before I can get going. I, like, I, I wanted to be two weeks in by now and I just, I just haven't been able to do it. We talked about sixty acres, fire breaks, I've, I've reestablished, we already had fire breaks over here. I've reestablished old fire breaks from, from previously disturbed habitat. The Dow plant down there had a bunch of roads, we're using those. There's some old disc lines in there, I've used those. My guys have already been over here, the fire breaks are established and we're ready to go for this year. So, I'm real happy with that. Grouping, I'm gonna try to group as many close blocks together as possible. I really don't wanna go much over a hundred acres a day, just because of the resources I have and the amount of smoke that I'm gonna put up. But I am gonna try to group them together, so I won't be up here at Carolina Beach and then down to Curry Beach on the same day. I'm gonna work, I'm gonna work together. Smoke management, we talked about that. One thing I do wanna bring up, there's five blocks that are east of Dow Road. And because they're east of Dow Road, when I burn, Dow Road's gonna get eaten up in smoke. It's gonna be, it's gonna be treacherous, it's gonna be dangerous and there's gonna be a safety issue there. I have reached out to the NC DOT to see about detours. I have not received anything back. So, if you know anybody at NC DOT, let me know so I can...
Bruce knows them all.
Okay. So, let, let's, let's, let's try to find somebody NC DOT so I can, so I can coordinate it. And the reason I say then first, I talked to, um, the manager, the emergency manager at Curry, at Curry Beach and he, he, he said, hey, go to NC DOT first and then see if, what they'll do. I've also talked to the fire chief at Curry Beach and he's all about, uh, if we need to shut it down, he understands smoke and wildland fire. And he said, if we need to shut it down, we'll shut it down. So, just so I can get it burned and really get it off in the afternoon, it probably won't be as bad. But I did wanna throw that out there, there could be some, that's where you're, you're gonna get hit probably the most by, by, by your people, the people in the town that, uh, that are angry because they have to go down Ocean Boulevard or they can't go down Dow Road or the smoke, that type of stuff. That's the pushback you're gonna get from it. The fire, and I'm sorry, like I said, I meant, I brought this digital. Here's the plan and I can send this to you, I can send you a map of this. It's all over the place, alright? And I do that for a reason. I want, I want a checkerboard type effect. Once everything's laid out, it will be a checkerboard effect. It'll be burn, no burn, burn, no burn, all the way down. And that's an ecological thing that allows for refugia for animals that need to move, so the deer, you know, hopefully we'll get turkey over here, the ground nesting birds, the small mammals. They can move out of this block into this block, but it also sets up different nesting, like ground nesting birds are big on my, on my radar. It sets up for different nesting substrate. So, we're burned this year and next year, we burned this this year, next year we'll burn here, it'll be one-year fuel. Then we'll burn this one, it'll be one-year, two-year fuel. This is the preferred ground species, uh, ground cover for ground nesting birds, small mammals, that type of thing. So, I'm setting it up ecologically and that kind of checks that box that I'm supposed to do for the, the whole DOD ecological sustainment type thing. That's all I have as far as giving you some, 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 some ideas of what we're gonna do and where we're gonna go. And any questions you have, I would free to, feel free to ask and ask.
I don't feel qualified to ask questions, but I'm gonna try.
Sure.
Um, so, fir- first thing was, when you're gonna have those burns, I assume you'll communicate to the town. We can help you get the information out, 'cause a lot of times it's the surprise more than anything, you know, that we didn't know this was happening. So, if you can just get with, with Bruce and his team to make sure that when we're doing that, that people know, we'll help you get that word out. And, um, and then the other thing was during the, uh, tropical storm or whatever we're calling it, PTC eight that we had. There was a general belief that that mulching operation impacted stormwater retention on that property. Is there any science behind, I, I don't...
Stormwater retention?
Like in terms, was there more runoff of that property because of the clearing or do we know? I, this is just anecdotal conversation, so I don't know.
Sure, sure, sure. And I was hit with that too when it first came out and the first thing I thought was, well, we got twenty inches of rain at one point.
Uh, yeah, that is true.
That had a lot to do with it. More than, more than anything, we had twenty inches of rain, you guys had twenty inches of rain like that. And that had more to do with it than others. The other thing I would say, it could have had some effect on it, but I don't wanna say yet it absolutely did. Because we did remove some of that vertical stuff, there could have been some resistance, but we're talking vegetation, we're not talking walls and stuff.
Yeah.
Um, I, I would say minimal. I would say probably yes, but probably minimal. What I would say is we need to, we as a group, all of us up and down the, up and down Dow Road, probably need to do better on coordinating maintenance on the ditches and making sure all the ditches are good. Are our culverts, are they big enough where they can move? I know the one down at Dow on K, there's conversation now, they're just not big enough. So, they need, they wanna make it a little bit bigger, I think. They're talking with DOT to see about that. So, it could, it could.
That was my second, that was my second question is, so will any of, I don't know exactly what our obligations are for, we have some obligations for keeping Henniker's clear, right? Don't we, the town has some obligation there? So, whatever we're doing and you're doing should be coordinated, right?
Yes.
When it comes to Henniker's ditch.
Yes, so the way I understand it...
Like, I don't know the next time we're cleaning that, but he probably needs to know or...
It's not my area. We have a, we have a young lady named Megan Finnegan, wonderful, she's our real property lady. It usually comes through Ed or maybe Bruce may be part of it too, I don't know. But it comes down through us, hey, we need, we're gonna be working on the ditches. And we go, oh, yeah, good, we're working on the ditches, that kind of thing.
I just don't want you fighting against, or not fighting, that's a bad word, but pulling it...
Are you on, so I sent out a notification, let's go back to the first part. I sent out a notification, when I first got here, I started calling everybody. Who can I put on my email? Who wants to know, who, this, that and the other? I know Ed's on it, are you on my notification? Okay, so Ed, I know Ed Parvin's on it.
Yeah, that's Ed.
We're Ed. Oh, you're Ed, okay. Yeah, there's me, sorry. So, I know Ed's on it, but we can add everybody in this room.
Absolutely.
So...
I would love to be on it.
If you'll send me whoever you want.
Okay.
On that notification. And what I told Curry Beach, same thing I'll tell you guys, I'll give you forty-eight hours notice, minimal. It's probably gonna be longer than that, it's probably gonna be a week, five days. Because I'm looking at weather patterns right now and I've gotta have specific weather patterns for over here. Over there, not so much. But over here, you're gonna get forty-eight hours minimum notice on, hey, I'm coming, this is when I'm coming, this is where I'm going. The day of the burn, you're also gonna get a notice and I filled his email, he is, his email box up, so he knows about this.
Maybe Ed doesn't want us on that distribution if it's that many emails.
You're gonna get a, you're gonna get a map, you're gonna get acres total. I'm gonna give you as much information and be as transparent as I can, especially over here. Over there, you might not care as much other than you're gonna get smoke when you have to move or something like that. Because over there, sorry, I'm gonna, I'm sending smoke this way to you whenever I get the date. But over here, you're gonna get as much notice as I can absolutely give you. And Ed, if you can give me whatever you can, I'll put it on your notification. I've got fifty people on my notification right now. We can add it, this is just, uh, too easy.
Yeah, I have a question.
Any other questions?
I have one.
Yep, Mike.
So, you're talking about, um, you know, you're wait, we haven't really had any rain to speak of since September, whatever. Are you looking for days when you know it's gonna rain so you can run the fire beforehand because the rain's gonna come squash, squash it afterwards? Or are you worried that it's too dry out there to do it?
Both. Right now, it's too dry to even put the fire on. Now, that being said, there's two blocks that I'm going off the top of my head right now, down at, on K Avenue, which is Curry Beach, I get that. Right next to the, um, there's a ball, no, not a ball, well, there's ball fields, pickleball courts and tennis, golf.
Disc golf.
Yeah, there's a couple of blocks right there that I think I could burn right now and not have any issue because they don't have that organic fuel if they're really high and dry, dune-ish type.
So, you're looking for a little rain to moisten it up and then a day when it rains afterwards, so when you, after, right?
Yeah, so I need, I need about two to four inches of rain before I can get started.
By the way, I played the disc golf course Sunday and...
What'd you think?
It worked for me.
Every time I, I drove down there yesterday and I had folks come by and ask me, hey, what are you doing? What are you doing? Are you building condos? I keep hearing condos, I'm like, no.
Opened up a new line on number fifteen for me.
Right, right.
Uh, when you have a sixty acre, how, how big's your crew?
I have a seven-person crew. It's me, I'm, I'm the oversight, I'm the supervisor type. I do a lot more administrative, communicative, I do weather oversight, I'm watching the burn, I'm directing people. And I have a burn boss who works directly for me and then he has a crew of six or seven people. So, for example, um, our largest block last year crossed over there to terminal was close to three hundred and fifty acres. And we did that in one day, that, that was a long day. And for here, that's big. Back home, we were doing thousands of acres a day because we, and we had, we were all internal. So, it's different, hundred sixty-one thousand acres versus sixteen. It's, you know, it's a tenth of a, tenth of a footprint. So, um, and a good crew. My, my burn boss is the former fire management officer from Camp Lejeune, so years and years of experience. And he knows, he knows more than I've ever, probably ever will know. And then I'm blessed to have him. And then I've got a nice crew that come in and a lot of fire, former fire department folks from Camp Lejeune. And then a couple of young foresters that are coming in and they've been great to work with, so awesome crew.
So, the, the only thing I have is if you could send us those slides, that would be absolutely fantastic.
Sure, I'll send you these, I'll send you these right there.
And, and do you work at all in conjunction with our fire department or are you guys just solo?
In conjunction, just communication.
Right.
Knowing names, knowing people and coming by and talking to folks. I've had more experience with Chief Kennedy down at Curry Beach than I have up here at, at Carolina Beach, but they're on notifications.
Do you know Chief Griffin?
No, we have not met.
You will.
You will. That's Chief Griffin, he's our fire chief.
He was actually in the mountains when I, when I came down back last month to do my, to do my brief. He was actually gotten pulled to the mountains and was working with the folks up there and doing the good things up, over there to help those folks out. So, we didn't get a chance to meet, but we have had email exchanges.
Yeah, awesome.
Anything to add, anybody else have questions?
No, I think he's answered all my questions.
Yep, thank you for coming, we appreciate it.
At, anytime you have questions, please reach out. Once we start burning, here's the only thing I will say, once we start burning, I'd rather not have a whole bunch of sightseeing. So, um, if you want to come out to see a fire while we're burning, just let me know. I'll, I'll tell you what, work through chief and we'll work with him, that way he's at least on a fire department vehicle.
Yeah.
Um, and we keep, we keep the residents from, you know, rubbernecking and...
I'm going to other drink. I'm going away.
I wanna go, I wanna come watch.
Well, I said, work with the chief if you would and, um, that way, that way we're, we're official.
Exactly, gotcha.
In a fire department, if something breaks out, he can just, he can just call the people.
Yep.
But yeah, any, any questions and Ed, reach out to me whenever you need to. And, um, I keep going to Ed because he's my, he's been my point. So, he works with Megan emotionally, I think.
Awesome.
Yeah, but if we could get that slide presentation and get on your notifications.
Sure, sure.
Be great.
Sure, we will do that.
Awesome, thank you for coming, Kevin, we appreciate it.
Appreciate you having me.
Anything else from council? I think that's it. Alright, with that, uh, this meeting is adjourned.